Okay, we're going to reopen the Bronxville Board of Trustees meeting for January 8, 2024 and ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My mayor's report is very short, just to thank everybody for shopping locally. Our merchants told me they had a pretty good season and just to ask you to keep shopping because January and February, when we all realized we spent too much money, sometimes we don't shop. So the merchants just wanted to send a big thank you. And just one other event coming up, and trustees, please fill in when I forget some of these things, is the Martin Luther King Breakfast, which is Monday, the 15th, 8:30 a.m. And the Reform Church is amazing. It's sponsored by the Eastchester Community Action Program, and it's the only Martin Luther King event, and it's a big fundraiser for their after-school program. And everyone is welcome. And the church gives them the space. And our incredible Rotary Club donated all the cost of the food this year, so everything they make is going to go right back to the kids. So you can go on the ECAP website, it's E-C-A-P, and sign up. I think it's $30 or $35 to come to the breakfast, and it's incredible. I would have to say, everything that we did in the past month has been overshadowed by the passing of the entire Morgan family. And our officers, it's been very, very hard for our officers, our staff. We're giving any counseling that people want. And just ask everybody to keep their extended family in your thoughts and prayers, because it really has been incomprehensible. So just say a prayer for those in the Morgan family, the rest of their family. And that is my report. Trustees, did I miss, is there any other events? Things start off a little slowly, and since we're so early in the month, I guess those are, any other events? Anything? Yeah, I think we didn't, the holidays kind of, in a nice way, slowed down as everybody turned inward. So then-
Although, Mayor, I would mention, you know, the trustees had a working session on December 11th to, you know, think about issues in the coming year, and we'll be approving those minutes. So even though the holidays were around under your leadership, you thought we should get a head start on our homework for 2024, and I think we all thought that was a useful working group meeting.
That's good to mention, because we have started adopting these multi-hour weekend public, open-to-the-public sessions, because we can't seem to, you know, get all your capital improvement ideas in right before these meetings. So I think those are really important, and thank you for mentioning that. You know. All right, Mr. Palmer.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple items. First, in reference to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Village offices will be closed next Monday, the 15th. Also, just wanted to mention, of course, the village is continuing to pick up any Christmas trees that are placed curbside, where we have those mulched over at the yardway side off of California Road, so residents can continue to put those out curbside, just not in the street. And also, through this Friday, thanks to the wonderful efforts of the Bronxville High School Earth Club in conjunction with the PTA Sustainability Committee, we are collecting those, any holiday lights. And we actually have a whole box and then some filled out front. I must say, it's actually, I think that was just a brilliant idea that-
We're collecting them here at Village Hall, as well as the school?
Yes, yes, through this Friday. What a great way, because honestly, it seems like everyone goes through so many lights, and the Green Committee was really helpful in trying to push that. The only other thing I just wanted to mention is, we, of course, did just have our first snow-on-ice event, and there were some businesses and residents that didn't clear their sidewalks. So again, the code does spell out, excuse me, the timeframe at which they have to be done, you know, 24 hours for residents and 12 hours in the downtown. But please, make sure your contractor takes care of your sidewalks and clears them before they freeze over. And then also, the other reminder is just reminding residents that if they do have a private contractor plow their driveway, what is absolutely prohibited and a ticketable offense in the village is if the contractor plows the snow out into the public roadway across the street, which has happened, and then to boot, they plow it onto a sidewalk. So make sure your contractor doesn't do that. That's it.
Okay. We will move on to the approval of two sets of minutes from the executive session, the work session, and the regular meeting of December 11th, and that additional work session of December 17th. And again, thank you, Mary Ann. And do I have a motion to accept both sets? Okay, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, minutes accepted. And then new business, we have a light schedule this month. Mr. Palmer, do you want to start with appointing a budget officer?
Sure, just, yeah, I just look at this, yes. Just, it's the kickoff to our budget season, as we start a new calendar year. So yes, if you could just appoint me as the budget officer pursuant to our village law and our local code, budget officer for the fiscal year and to work with our treasurer.
And this is such an honor to be the budget officer.
I just love it, and Laurie, I really-
I hope you appreciate the, seriously, between you and our treasurer, Laurie Voss, you make it so easy for us. So thank you both. Thanks, Laurie, for always being here, too. All right, who would like to move? Jim, as the budget officer?
I'll move that.
All right, and a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Jim, you won.
All right, you're stuck with me. All right, so, okay, and the next item is following our discussions on the review of the village's audited financial statements and where we currently are with our, the village's fund balance, and likewise, relative to the village's ongoing extensive capital needs. You did request that the village treasurer and I draft a resolution assigning some of the unassigned fund balance specifically for future capital projects. So that's the resolution that you have before you, which spells out that the village does have annual debt service obligations of 12% of its operating expenditures, and we also have a continuation of many long-term capital needs. So it makes sense to simply assign some of that fund balance, which last year, as you know, was a positive year, because the village has continued to budget conservatively for items such as sales tax revenue. But our capital needs are absolutely great. So at this point in time, our recommendation is to transfer $1.5 million assigned to capital.
Okay.
And I think, just to clarify, Jim, when you mentioned that debt service at 12%, that's on the high side. If you look at, I think it's important that that's not a number, if you look at that number, if you benchmark that across other villages, that would be on the high side.
Absolutely, yes.
And so therefore, it makes sense to alleviate future borrowing by using fund balance.
And this is in the context of the board having recently taken action to authorize potentially significant amounts, which will probably not get lower, related to flood mitigation projects.
Right, and to your point, the village has been trying to be very careful and strategic and to limit taking on additional debt when other debt service is now matured. But in this case, we do, we're trying to maintain that 12%, but the fact of the matter is, we do have significant capital needs, which will impact our ability to stay within that. So to assign some monies for that use-
I'd like to move it enthusiastically.
It's a very conservative approach to budgeting for future capital needs. I agree.
Was that a second?
Second, that was a second, a very wordy second, yes.
No, I was going to say, before we vote, we had the wonderful 125th anniversary of the village, but a side effect of that is we have an infrastructure that's 125 years old. So, you know, there's joy up here, but the subsurface, we've really started to look at everything. So I'm taking a vote, all those in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and then our assessor provided us just another two small claim residential, small claim assessment review settlements, for a total of, I think, just over $800. What was it, $805 for the village for two properties, and total school refunds for $3,170.55, and this was for the 2023 year. And I think these were the last two for last year.
Yeah, this clears it up, if I understand correctly.
Which is really nice, this does clear, clear everything out. So, and I thought he did a terrific job. So I will move to accept these settlements.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and just the, and the final item, we've discussed in the past, and it's, this resolution authorizes me to execute an agreement with Villa BXV as it relates to two particular items. One is the allocation of 11 spaces on the lower level, which they're currently using, but to memorialize it in an amendment to the existing lease agreement, parking easement agreement that we have for the parking garage. And then also, authorizing me to execute a stormwater maintenance agreement with Villa BXV, which they are required to do with the village.
Perfect, all right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And now we have, I see our two justices are here tonight, and we asked them to come, Justice Prims and Justice Nordahl, to give us a little bit of, we're doing all our different departments in sort of a state of the court, and just, we'd like to hear from you both. But first of all, a huge thank you for what you do, because I don't think people realize that you really, when you're on duty, you're on 24/7. This is not a day job, and I know you get called in at all hours, and I think it'd be nice to have people understand, actually, not only the cases, but what it involves being our justices, because I think we have, I think we have the two best. So thank you both, and welcome, Justice Prims.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, your comment is very much on point. I was seated in your chair last night at 11:00 p.m. with a defendant in front of me, who had been arrested in the village of Rye, or the city of Rye, rather, and based on an arrest warrant that had been issued out of this court because of a theft in the middle of the village, out of a car. And so these things do happen, and we do have to be on duty at odd hours, shall we say. So I just thought that it might make sense for me to speak generally, and then for Judge Nordahl to speak about some of the specifics that we've seen. I do think that the overall health of the court and the way we've been handling cases, and the staffing of our, particularly with our excellent clerk and assistant clerk, Kelly Glover and Yessenia Tovar, we've been handling the caseload, I think, quite effectively, and that the transition from the COVID era to the post-COVID era has gone well, and, you know, it's obviously a big improvement to not have to do everything virtually and to not have everyone in the courtroom masked. It's hard to assess credibility of witnesses, hard to understand what people are saying. So those are some of the things that I think are good on the specifics. Generally, though, the court is under some pressure, not because of any performance problems, but because of, I would call them, political problems. There has been a challenge ongoing, and it really culminated in a June 12 report of the State Bar Association recommending the abolition of town and village courts in New York and their replacement with so-called district courts, which I don't think the report particularly well described what that alternative might be. The purported reason, or the stated reason for desiring the demise of the town and village courts in New York is that, it's true that in upstate New York, the majority of judges are not, do not have law degrees, and this raises a lot of questions and a lot of issues. But it seems, I think Judge Nordahl would agree with me, that this is the kind of swatting a mosquito with a sledgehammer. We don't have those problems here in Bronxville, we don't have those problems here in Westchester County. We have a highly qualified bench of judges that sits throughout Westchester. So we'll see what happens in the state legislature this year. There may be some legislation introduced to affect this. Another challenge to our way of dispensing justice has been the so-called CAP program, centralized arraignment part, which does seem to be going into effect in phases starting next month, and I think we'll be reporting further to the trustees about that. I think the concern there has been that because we're spread out in all the different jurisdictions in Westchester County, the district attorney cannot provide representation at arraignment proceedings throughout the county. And so we're in a situation, as I was last night, where there's a defense counsel, there's a judge, there's a defendant, but there's no district attorney to represent the people's side of things, or the victim's side of matters for that matter. So it's not a, they are addressing a real issue. The problem, as often happens, is one of implementation, and the pressure that this system might put on our police force in particular, what do you do with a defendant who's here, been arrested in this town, and then has to go to White Plains, let's say, for the central arraignment part off-hours? So we'll see how that develops. The only other big picture issue is that after three years of District Attorney Miriam Roca being in office, she has announced she's not running for reelection. So we're going to have yet another change in the district attorney's office. And we had a very stable system for many years, that I inherited from Judges McKinnis and Mayor, where John Thomas had been the assistant district attorney, who for over a decade had been working with the Bronxville Court and getting to know the ins and outs of our community. And since that time, I think really, at about the time of Judge Nordahl taking the bench, we lost Assistant DA Thomas, and we've had, I think it's, we're up to four substitutes. So it's been kind of a revolving door. Now, these people are good. We certainly have thought that the assistant district attorneys have done a good job, but we've lacked continuity. And with the new district attorney coming on in this, coming up in the election in November, we'll see how that works out. So those are the big picture concerns we have, and I know that Judge Nordahl wants to speak to some of the specifics.
Thank you. And Judge Nordahl, thank you for coming to our work session as well. We appreciate it.
Of course. Happy to come back if you ever want to invite me back. My pleasure. A few, I guess you would call them housekeeping things. The town prosecutor, Ron Ritz, who is the person who does all the plea agreements when we do have court, he has been under the weather for a number of months, and so we've had someone substituting for him. And I would just note that, because Ron is, you know, beloved by all of us, but also to note that there's been no issue with that, and the new person doing his work is fine, and everything's moving along just fine, and we do expect him to be back soon. I would agree with Justice Prims, I think the court's functioning very well, we're back to normal. We do have a Spanish interpreter now for our criminal nights and for our vehicle and traffic days. I would say that it's interesting, you know, Kelly Glover has been a clerk for a number of years, and yet, I don't know if there's something in the air, but it seems like we're very busy, and everything's maybe more complicated, because she and I keep on saying to each other, well, I haven't seen this before, and I haven't seen this before. It's okay for me to say that, I'm four years into the job, but Kelly's been doing this for a while, and yet, we seem to be having things happen lately. Part of me wonders if the people who authored the report by the State Bar Association have ever actually been to a village or town court, because I think there's sort of an underestimation of what takes place, and there is actually quite a bit going on. We have noticed an uptick in landlord tenant matters lately, for the first time in a long time. I guess maybe, if you would agree, Judge Prims, it has to do with the resolution of all the measures that were in place during COVID. But we went a long time without having any, and now we have many, I would say. I would also just reiterate that I would invite you all to come to court. You would be surprised. It's interesting, and you could see for yourselves what's going on. I know Judge Prims and I are very busy, I mean, the workload itself, we both authored a number of decisions this year. I have a little binder where I keep them, and my little binder's growing. We did have, I did have the pleasure of conducting the first jury trial in the village of Bronxville in 30 years, and I know I mentioned that privately, but I also didn't have an opportunity to express that. I think you all would have been very proud of our staff. A jury trial is not an insignificant event. Things have to be done according to procedure, you know, you have people coming in, serving as jurors, and there's a way it has to be done, and it has to be done correctly. And of course, we all want to do it correctly. And so I think, and we also, you know, we had video evidence, we had to have an additional officer, and he was in charge of the jurors, and they have to be dealt with, and they have to be fed, and, you know, things need to go according, you have to pick a jury. So I was enormously proud of the way in which everyone in the building handled it, and I thought we conducted a fair trial, and I think that you will all, you would have been proud to have seen how it was conducted. We did have one juror say, of all the trials I've served as a juror on, this was the best. And I think that's because, in order to avoid the drama of sending them into town for an hour for lunch, we just ordered in, and we just kept them here, and we said, don't try to drive or walk or whatever, we just ordered them lunch, and I just think, you know, they will, they will answer that call next time if they get called to the village of Bronxville.
Well, we had no place for them to park, so, right?
It was just, I think it was money well spent, honestly. I think it just was better, and we were able to get them out of here in two days. So we also had a bench trial, and Justice Prims presided over a small claims matter recently. We've had a significant amount of motion practice, and I think our clerks are rising to the occasion, I feel that Justice Prims and I are rising to the occasion. We do a lot of education, a lot of continuing judicial education credits, a lot of, you know, judge community type things, and I actually, I served as a judge this year for the mock trial competition at Iona for two days, which was really fun, it was all the colleges. It was actually, I think, all up and down the northeast coast, big schools, and that was really fun, and a good way to get credit. So I think that's really all I have to say, though, but I really would invite you, if you have questions for us, we would be very happy to answer them. I think we're just happy that somebody's interested in the court. We fly under the radar a little bit, but that's probably, has its benefits as well.
Thank you. And I think we need it to be educated, because, you know, I've learned from you that we're just a microcosm. You have landlord tenant harassment case, you have every kind of case, short of the real major felonies, thank goodness, but you have the whole gamut. And I think sometimes people think, and for a while I did, that sleepy little Bronxville doesn't have much, and your docket is busy and varied. And I just appreciate this little education for us, and I, frankly, I think you're a terrific team, the way you work together, and that makes it really nice in Village Hall as well. So thank you.
We do share one job, you know, we are-
Yeah.
No, and anything other than that, the kind of job sharing could lead to things like, you know, judge shopping and forum shopping, and we really want to present a very unified frontier, and I think we do.
Yeah, that's quite clear, it is.
Thank you both for your professionalism.
Yeah.
Can I just, I just want to ask, these two measures that you say the state is considering, you know, the elimination of the local courts and the arraignment centers, is that something that we should be advocating for, you know, on our municipality's behalf with our state senator and state assemblywoman? I just don't know what the timing is.
I would think that certainly Senator Mayor and our assemblywoman and Paulin and even, now that the Senate Majority Leader is, you know, right next door to us, all those individuals ought to be contacted, because we certainly don't think it would be good for the village to, you know, have our cases consigned to some, it wouldn't be necessarily a faraway forum, but it wouldn't be like having a court here in Bronxville. I don't know if you want to add to that?
So the decision on the Bar Association recommendations would be made in Albany?
It would be.
Okay.
It would have to be a state legislative enactment, signed into law by the governor.
Okay, okay.
This is not to say that there aren't placed, there are a couple of issues, for sure, but I think what Justice Prims said was very accurate, that this was a bit of an overreaction. It really was what was-
They're making it one-size-fits-all, instead of-
Right. I mean, there are peculiar problems upstate, you know, it seems, they're really astounding statistics on how few lawyers there are in some of the upstate counties. New York State itself, of course, is, on the whole, is very well supplied with lawyers.
Our area particularly.
Yeah, in particular around here. But the upstate counties, of course, the lawyers depend a lot on fees that are generated by traffic and enforcement, particularly on the thruway, the northway, the major thoroughfares that go through some of these less populated areas. And they do not want to lose that revenue stream by sitting on the bench and being conflicted out of these matters. conflicted out of these matters. So you have this untrained judiciary, and I don't mean to denigrate them, but there are real issues. I mean, the upstate courts have the same jurisdiction that we do over misdemeanors, and so there's a very big issue as to whether a judge without a legal degree can sentence someone to a year in prison. I mean, that could happen with misdemeanor.
Yeah.
Is that a violation of due process? I'd kind of like to have that side of the argument in front of the Supreme Court, or any other forum.
Well, I remember when my parents had a little place in the Adirondacks, and the judge was, he went to his basement, and you could also get your fishing license while you were there, because he was the fishing license person. So I think, to your point, it's kind of, one size doesn't fit all, clearly. So, but that's an interesting question about a non-judge sentencing someone to a-
Lose their freedom for a year, that's pretty stringent.
Serious, yeah.
There are a lot of these judges, though, at the Magistrates Association's events, there was one, I think it was in Niagara Falls, and many of them are very dedicated, knowledgeable, and, you know, there's a range. But every week you open up the Law Journal, there's a town or village justice resigning over Facebook posts or notes.
Yeah.
A little bit of the Wild West out there.
Yeah. Well, we're lucky to have you both. Any other questions for them, except a big thank you to both of you? Thank you. You really go above and beyond. Thank you. All right, I think, any questions from our audience? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close our January meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.